Good evening. Brian, thank you.
Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. The Village of Deerfield Board of Trustees Meeting, December 16, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Shapiro.
Here.
Trustee Benton.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Goldstone.
Here.
Trustee Jacoby.
Here.
Trustee Metzchilders is absent. Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Jerry. Jerry, if you wouldn't mind, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Earlier today, there was a shooting in Madison, Wisconsin, at the Abundant Life Children Christian School. Three people were shot dead, six injured, including teenagers, a teacher, and the shooter was a juvenile. I'm going to just hold back my rage because I think we all feel it, but I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, please. Our thoughts to the community, parents, and the families of those who are victims of the shooting. The Deerfield Police Department has a presentation they would like to make to the Cancer Wellness
Good evening, Board. I have Kerry Callis with me and Ellen Razoo. Good, all right. And Officer Lauren Maldonado. In 2022, the department put together our first pink patch fundraiser for the month of October in conjunction with the Cancer Awareness Month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And the group of us that got together decided that we wanted to do something more local than to the national organization. The group came up with and chose the Cancer Wellness Center out of Northbrook. Because of what they do, they touch all different types of cancer, not just the breast cancer. They do free counseling, and I'm sure Kerry will get a little bit more into it, free counseling, support groups, health nutrition programs for over 1,800 community members of all ages and backgrounds. The department members wear the pink patches in the month of October to, instead of our standard patches, to raise funds for the cancer wellness. The public is able to, with a minimum donation, get a pink patch to help with the program. In 2022 and 23, we raised approximately $3,800 through events such as Coffee with a Cop. Portillo's is a great help. We do Portillo's for the good. And this year, we even did, worked with the high school and did an event up at the high school along with the cancer wellness. The generosity of community support hopefully will have an impact on the Cancer Wellness Center and their ability to make a difference. So this year, we are, biggest check I've ever seen come on at the department. I'm sorry, a check for $2,362.
All right. Thank you so much, and thank you for going local with your fundraising efforts. We greatly appreciate it. I'm Kerry, the Executive Director of Cancer Wellness Center. I've been there about three months. And this is Ellen Razoo, who is one of our board members as well as a Deerfield resident, so she said she would join me. Our mission at Cancer Wellness Center is to help anyone with cancer find a way forward, and not just the patient, but their family as well, because as anyone knows who has had a cancer diagnosis, it impacts everyone around them. So we do that through individual, family, and couples counseling with licensed professional counselors. We have support groups, we have bereavement groups, and then we have health and wellness activities such as nutritional counseling, educational programs, and things like mindfulness, yoga to treat your whole self as you're going through your diagnosis. So, thank you again. All of our services are provided completely by fundraising and by some grant support. So every check makes a huge difference and allows us to serve Deerfield residents and, you know, our neighboring communities.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations on your new position.
Thank you. We greatly appreciate it. And we're supposed to take a picture, I was told, by our, okay.
And just, just real quick, over the three years, we've donated over $6,000. So we're so grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the report of the Community Development Department. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. It's been a busy year in the Community Development Department. In your packet was the written report summarizing the activity of the Community Development Department from January 1st through November 30th. I will cover some of those highlights. The Community Development Department is comprised of the Building Division and the Planning Division. The Building Division implemented new online building permits throughout the year, so at this point, all of our building permits are now in the online format, which is a huge accomplishment. It's been a number of years, and our team has done a great job getting that all online. So all the workflows, all the fees can be paid online. It adds a lot of clarity, transparency to the workflows and things of that nature, so people can see where they are in the process. So, kudos to the team for getting that done. 2,346 online construction building permits were received through November 30th of this year. That equates to $2.5 million in building permit revenue. The value of that private investment, so the total value of that construction, is over $100 million.
Wow.
That's $29 million at 1101 Lake Cook Road, 6.5 million at 610 Briar Hill Road, and just shy of $5 million invested at 728 Waukegan Road, the former Barnes &amp; Noble space. That activity is accompanied by 2,334 building inspections. Following a distinguished 48-year career with the Village of Deerfield, our Building and Code Enforcement Supervisor Clint Case retired this past June. Staff worked with the hiring team to hold interviews and onboard Mike Delillo to fill the new position of Building Division Supervisor. We're really happy to have Mike as part of our team. The Plan Commission reviewed seven special use applications, five amended special uses, five PUDs, seven text amendments, two REES subdivisions, held 19 public hearings, and 16 workshop meetings. Some of the notable land use reviews included Lake Cook Crossing, that's the transit-oriented development at the back of Deerbrook Mall, 254 multifamily residential units, including 25 affordable units. Of course, Polte Homes was granted approval at 300 Wilmont Road, consisting of a PUD for 42 single-family homes with three affordable homes. And then, just this past November, the Board accepted the Plan Commission's recommendation for a final development plan for Ven Point. It's 144 townhomes out at 5 and 8 Parkway North. Also, that includes 14 affordable homes. There were a number of text amendment updates. Some of those included changes to the uses that are in the I-2 and the I-1 Limited Industrial District. They adjusted parking requirements for medical and dental uses, text amendments for regulations for sport courts, text amendments for construction and demolition signs, a text amendment for the monument sign at Deerfield High School, and a text amendment for sidewalk signage as well. Other notable land uses and new businesses were Skyzone, the Canine Animal Pet Resort, the Hank Haney Golf Studio. And as staff is a liaison to several boards and commissions, staff participated in 18 public meetings with the Plan Commission, 10 meetings with the Appearance Review Commission, and eight meetings with the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Ad Hoc Working Group. During the eight meetings with the ARC, 19 petitions were reviewed, and they're meeting next door right now. Those are some of the highlights. I'd like to thank the entire Community Development Department for their help this year and for the help in preparing this report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I first want to thank you for all of your hard work for this year. It was a very, very busy year.
Yep.
You guys did a tremendous job, and I want to thank Dan, who's here, and the Plan Commission, et cetera, for all the hard work. While you were talking, I've jotted down eight major projects that we have going on. You may not have mentioned them all, but we have eight projects in one phase or another that you guys are working on really, really well. And it's a lot of stuff, and thank you, not the least of which is two TIF districts. So, appreciate that. And I also was struck by the fact that you said we have about 2,300 permits, over $2.5 million of money coming in from those permits. That's a lot of stuff. And like I said, you guys handled everything, and I'm sure next year, we'll continue to handle everything beautifully. Thank you for your job well done.
Thank you. Thank you to the team. Thank you for all your support, and thank you to the Village Attorney's Office as well. They're alongside us on all these land use approvals. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for you?
You know, I'm very glad you, Andrew, you included this real estate market comparison, because it's a question that many of us get, and we're all curious about how we're doing vis-à-vis compared to other communities around us, and it is astonishing how much in demand the housing is in our community.
Yes, and one of the things we hear and the questions we get is, you know, Deerfield is this compared to Highland Park, or Deerfield's that compared to Northbrook. And year after year, this report's in here, and the same externalities or external factors that are impacting the housing market in Deerfield, Northbrook, and Highland Park, they're trending the same way, right?
Right.
So, sales prices are up 15% in Deerfield. The quantity in the inventory of homes is down, but it tracks the same in all of the communities.
Yep.
So the story is the same. There's nothing unique impacting Deerfield, the residential, and this is a single-family residential housing market that's summarized here, but it's consistent across the three communities. And right now, it's a very strong market, and there's very little inventory, about one month of inventory on the market, and so it's very limited.
Which makes it even better that we're working on this development to give people more places to live.
Bringing housing, and I think just as importantly, the variety of housing.
Right.
We have everything from the affordable, to the middle, to the luxury apartments at 728 Waukegan Road, to luxury homes. So you're offering something for everybody. I think that's important.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Kudos.
Thank you again. Minutes of the previous meeting, December 2nd, 2024, their motion.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bills and payroll. It's their motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now is the time during our meeting where we offer the public an opportunity to make a comment on a matter that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment, offer a public comment that is not on the agenda? There is none. So let's move on to our reports. Item 24-106-1, a report and presentation of Ven Point regarding 5 and 8 Parkway North. Is there a presentation? Yes, there is, by the petitioner. If you could please introduce yourself.
Okay. Sir, the button I pushed to share.
You want to share?
No.
If you just let me know, we'll turn.
Okay. Good evening. Nick Marietti, on behalf of Ven Point, and I see everybody again. I'm here to present a couple of minor tweaks that we made to our site plan that occurred between the substantial conformance meeting and approvals and vote from, forgive me, a few weeks ago. And today, we submitted kind of a cover letter to staff showing or listing what those minor tweaks were, and I'm happy to walk through them now. So first, there were several, what we refer to as dead-end sidewalk areas within the development where they were kind of hard, I wish Joe was here to defend himself, but got a little carried away with the connections of the sidewalks and just kind of running them in all different directions, and we ended up kind of spilling into road areas where there's no parking, there's nowhere to go, you're just going to be walking in the middle of the street, so we terminated a number of those. That also applies to some of the connections to the trail. So if you recall, or if you're aware, there's a trail on Saunders Road that runs kind of adjacent on the west side of our property. We had at least five, maybe six connections, but those connections ran through some landscaped areas with some mature trees. It was creating more kind of impermeable space and creating some minor detention issues, but more importantly, it was the same issue where to get to the trail or to get off the trail, you were walking through the middle of the street, which just didn't make a lot of sense. It wasn't necessarily aesthetically pleasing or safe for that matter. With respect to the facades, the facade, the brick veneer on the facade was kind of staggered up and down throughout the building. We leveled that out. We think it's more aesthetically pleasing. We are adding or requesting to add a very minor berm area on Saunders Road where there's already a berm. We're adjusting it kind of up on the slightly north of center, increasing that berm on the other side of the berm, on our property side of the berm. It won't interfere with any backyards. It shouldn't even be visible from the street. We moved a couple of the buildings to just be extra cautious with respect to where the utility lines are coming in. We moved them a couple of feet. It's not even really noticeable on the plan, but just to be extra safe, our contractor said, we staked them, we flagged them, but we said, look, it's fine, but it's a little close, a little too close for comfort. And then we also removed the very small curved areas in between garages. So with in-between garages where there are downspouts coming down, those downspouts were spilling into a curved area, and our experience, we own about 1,500 townhomes, and our experience is that those become fairly hazardous in the winter because...
Icy.
Yeah, the idea is that they would kind of absorb, but not when it's the middle of February and it's negative 10 out. So they just end up spilling, and if it's really cold, the water will freeze before it has a chance to run down the driveway into the drains. So instead of that, we're going to drain directly into the ground to eliminate that completely, which is, again, aesthetically preferable from our perspective and also safer.
Thank you for going through the changes. I know there's some work to be done to finalize the documents, so we're not doing any vote tonight.
Understood.
We'll go to our next meeting for consideration, and hopefully the documents and exhibits and everything will be tied up by then. But this is helpful for us to understand the nature of some of the changes. Does anyone have any questions? Here.
I do. I'm just looking at the two drawings that we have. So the site plan that we have that's dated September, that's the previous one, and it's got one, two, three, four, five entrances off of the walking path into the interior of the development. And so the one that is going to be the final plan has just one entryway off the walking path. Is that correct?
That's right.
That's the final plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Into that courtyard area.
Yeah.
Kind of flows all the way through, straight to the detention, like the pond viewing area.
Thank you.
One of the things that I get involved in here, because it's my background, is transportation. When this development came along, we looked at where the buses run to serve the development, going into Deerfield, going into the train station, going into Deerbrook. And it was my comment, and I've put this out before, but I don't know that anything's happened to it. As the buses operate up and down Deerfield Road, there really isn't a protected area for people to cross at the crosswalks to come to get on the other side of Deerfield Road, to get on a bus, on or off. And I ask that you guys look into it and try and find some way, and I don't know whether that goes with the, with the county or with the village or what, but to provide at least one intersection to connect the buses that serve Ven Point with destinations to get to the station to commute or to other jobs within the area or into town for people who want to go shopping. So that's something I might ask you to look into.
Sure, and I can't speak on behalf of the HOA or the REA, the Parkway North Association, but, you know, our land, you know, has its borders, and we're connecting to that trail up there on the north, the northeast corner of the property. At that point, that becomes HOA land, and, you know, I don't know if they've looked into that or not. I'm not really sure.
I would recommend that probably they do, because it's an advantage to your development in a number of different ways.
I agree.
But they have no control over it.
I'd also like to add, I know that PACE is reviewing every route it has, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that stuff is underway, just because of ridership and COVID and all those things. So I think to the extent that we can work with the Property Owners Association, and Chris and Tim, great to have you guys here tonight with us, we want to facilitate that. So to the extent that it's an advantage, but it's also PACE has to say yes kind of thing, we can't just make it happen.
Right.
If you will. But I think that's something that maybe we want to just reach out to PACE and say, hey, we've got 144 homes here.
Yeah.
And that might be an advantage to put a stop close by.
And as the Northwest Municipal Conference, on which I represent, the Village Transportation Committee works closely with PACE, and I have a good background with them, and we can be of help too in that area.
So we'll continue to work, I think, just, let's keep in contact on that particular topic.
Understood. Yep.
Questions from the Board or the public? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 24-139, a report and recommendation of staff regarding solar installation at the Village's wastewater treatment plant.
So we wanted to, staff wanted to pick up on discussions from October 16th. At that committee, the whole meeting, Verage LLC presented the Board with an option to enter into performance contract to install ground-mounted solar panels at the wastewater treatment plant. That's about 67,000 square feet of space with just over 1,000 solar panels. So since that meeting, staff has reviewed over a dozen different bids that include three different models or three different approaches. There's the performance contracting model, which Verage presented to us, general contracting, and power purchase agreements. So performance contracting guarantees the performance of those panels, and with that comes a solar revenue that is also guaranteed, or Verage will cut us a check if those numbers aren't met, and it's considered the turnkey model. Then we have general contracting, which is still an ownership model. The village would buy the panels, own the models, own the panels, but we must maintain and manage those panels for the 20-year term, or actually, we own it forever, but it's typically thought of as a 20- or 30-year lifecycle. And then, the power purchase agreement is the rental or the lease option. In this case, the rental options were more expensive when compared as a utility cost for the village compared to the ownership models. So after analyzing these bids, staff is recommending that if the Village Board wants to move forward with ground-mounted solar, we do that in the performance contracting model. We think that is the most favorable model. It will provide for the proper ongoing system maintenance. It will be economically favorable. It mitigates the risk and guarantees that the solar panel production and those associated solar revenues come to the village through those various incentive programs. And there's three different programs that we'd be taking advantage here, the SREC program, IRO program, and then a COMED inverter rebate program. The SREC program is a large, the largest incentive, and that is, you receive that money directly off of the production that you emit. So you have to meet those production thresholds to get those incentive dollars back. So if we take each of those factors individually, ongoing system maintenance, the Verage model will provide for daily monitoring, 24/7 monitoring through a software. They say that they will tell us that the problem's coming before the problem actually occurs. This includes routine system site visits and ensures that the panel production thresholds are met for that 20-year period. Again, they're incentivized to do that because if those production numbers aren't met and those incentives aren't delivered, Verage would be on the hook to cut us a check for the difference. So they want to do the maintenance. We find that this model is economically favorable. The performance contracting model offers a less expensive per-kilowatt utility rate when compared to the PPA model, or in this case, that's the rental model. It mitigates risks. That's that turnkey model. Here, we have a fixed cost. There are no change orders allowed in the contract. It provides for this concierge-level service with the ongoing maintenance, not only of just the system, but it's the ongoing grant and incentive program that we will need to complete paperwork with annually, and so they will help us with that on an annual basis. And then guarantees the solar production and those solar revenue savings. Verage is guaranteeing just over $2 million in solar revenue. If that production level is not met, Verage is obligated to cut the village a check for the difference. Then we just kind of wanted to reorient and discuss the baseline, so we should remember here, if we want to move forward, the baseline is not to spend either the $2 million, the Verage model, or spend $0, because there will be a 20-year electric utility spend at the wastewater treatment plant that is projected to be $8.7 million over the next 20 years. So if we compare that to the solar option, we're projecting utility costs to be $6.8 million over the 20 years for cumulative savings of $1.8 million. And while the turnkey project costs just over $2.1 million, after the incentives or the net cost, it would be equal to $686,338,000. That, as Verage explained to us, and I have it in here, we can go into the details, is a return on investment of 11 years. So at 11 years, we would break even.
Correct.
And the 20-year positive cash flow of just shy of $1 million. And so another way to put that is that is a 9% annualized return on your cash, which is very hard to achieve, and something the village does not have a tool to achieve 9% on our money. We don't have that kind of tool, but it's hard for anybody to achieve that. Notably, the incentives are heavily front-loaded, and $1.2 million of revenue will come back to the village within the first three years. So at the beginning of year four, the project will cost us $870,000, because those incentives are really heavily front-loaded, as we can show in a cash flow analysis here. And then we were asked to look at some of the references. So staff reviewed references of Verage. We found they completed 73 megawatts of solar canopies across the country in the past 20 years, 10 years, excuse me. So 73 megawatts of solar, just to put a little bit in perspective, the village operates a community solar program for seven communities here up and down the North Shore and Electric Aggregation Consortium. We have five megawatts of capacity for our seven communities. So they've completed 73 megawatts in 20 years, so it's a pretty substantial amount of solar installation. Notably, they worked with the City of North Vernon in Indiana to become Indiana's first solar city, with 3,900 solar panels across 22 different sites. But the important takeaway here was they installed solar panels at their wastewater treatment plants. We were looking for an example of that. And so they have 200 locations, of course, at wastewater treatment plants, schools, fire districts, airports, community colleges, libraries, and private corporations in Arizona, Indiana, Illinois, Missouri, and other states as well. So we felt very good about the references that we conducted. I'm happy to answer any questions. I have additional slides to go into the details if we want to dig into some of the bid analysis and the cash flow. We're prepared to do that. I can also just pause here and answer questions, and then the next steps, should the Board want to move forward, would be to direct the Village Attorney to prepare a resolution that would authorize the Village manager to enter into a letter of intent with Verage at the next meeting. So we would bring that resolution on January 6th that would allow Kent to enter into the LOI with Verage. After that, about 45 to 60 days later, we would have a completed engineering study from Verage and a final contract. And at that point, we would bring the final contract back to the Village Board for consideration, and should the Board decide not to move forward at that time, we would have to pay Verage for the engineering study, which is about $22,000. at that time, we would have to pay Verge for the engineering study, which is about $22,000. If we did move forward to contract into implementation, then that's included in the final cost of the $2.1 million. So I'm happy to go into more details or answer questions.
Questions?
So I seem to remember, and I could be not remembering properly, but I seem to remember them talking about some sort of incentives that they thought were going to expire at the end of this year. Did we miss out on that by taking this time? And do we know of any new ones that are coming in 2025, so that the timing works to our advantage?
Thank you. That's a key point. So Verge offered was domestic content, so US-made solar panels. They are honoring that. If we were to go to the LOI in January, they wanted to do it before the end of the year. They pushed that into January. So this is the best of the two options. If we waited longer, we would lose the domestic content, and there would have been less incentives. It's, I think it was $200,000 difference over the 20 years. So it wasn't the most important thing in our decision, right? And so we appreciate, staff appreciates the board asking us to do this. I think it was worthwhile. We learned a lot as well going through it. But to answer your question is, we are still on pace right now to capture the US-made domestic product and the largest of the incentives that was available at that time.
Okay, that's good.
So these numbers are valid?
Correct.
So I just want to say thank you very much. It was my urging that made you do all this extra work to come up with the same answer. But I thank you from the bottom of my heart, you, your staff, everybody who worked on this, because I needed it. We needed it. It's a big spend, and it's something huge for the village to undertake. So I appreciate it, and now I feel very confident. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to say, it was two months ago where Verge was here, and we were all pretty impressed.
Yep.
But Elaine said, slow down. Let's look at this more closely. Let's look at options. Let's look at other vendors. Let's look at this, because it's a big project, and let's take our time and take a breath on this. And we did. So we thank you for doing that. And this was worth the research that you did. I know it was a lot of hard work, but it gives us more comfort and confirmation that this seems to be the right choice for us. Should we go in that direction? But it just validated what we instinctively thought was good. Now we know. So thank you, and thank you for doing that. I thought it would be good to have this report and to break it up for future resolution, because it's a big thing for us. And I know we heard about it in October, we're hearing about it now, but I want to be very deliberate about it, too. And so I'd like all of us to let ourselves absorb this information, and then come back, and then if we can accept the report and the recommendation, and I think, come back next time for the resolution, or direct Ben's office to draft a resolution for the LOI. I just think it's prudent that we do it this way, because we're looking at a $2 million investment and a big deal.
And a new thing, too. This is a new experience for us. And I really appreciate the board's and Elaine's effort, because we're learning, you know, part of this is modeling for others, right? We can answer questions for others about what we learned through that process. So really a cool, really just a good exercise.
But to Jennifer's point, we still need to move on this so we don't lose an incentive.
Right. So should we wish, we would accept the recommendation and then authorize Ben's office to prepare a resolution for next time, and that would keep us in the timing for the, what's it called, domestic?
Domestic content.
Domestic content.
Credit.
Discount, or whatever.
Incentive.
Incentive, and then be able to move forward. So before we do that, public, any questions? Anything? Okay. It's a lot of stuff here, so we can ask our questions, but even before next meeting, if we have questions in the meantime, please direct Kent, Andrew. But for now, are there any questions before we take a vote on the report and the authorization to prepare the resolution? Okay. So with that, is there a motion?
I would move approval of the report.
Second.
And direct the village attorney to prepare.
Absolutely. You hand me it, hello.
There's a motion and a second. They need discussion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda, item 24-126 and 24-138. 24-126 is a resolution approving the regular meeting schedule of the board trustees for 2025, and 24-138 is an ordinance amending Article 16 of the municipal code to allow for the prosecution of violations of the Deerfield zoning ordinance through our administrative hearing system. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There's no old business under new business, item 24-127, resolution to award GIs services contract to municipal GIs partners in the amount of $96,129.24, or not to exceed, rather.
Thank you, Mayor. We've utilized the services of MGP since 2002. They're a great partner of ours, as you know, and you've probably used the map, some of the mapping yourself. We map everything in Public Works and Engineering. I know the other departments do as well, but we literally map our utilities. We've got our water services mapped, trees, and it's really helpful for us to have everything mapped. When you click on an asset in the map and you bring it up, it tells you all the attributes about the asset, be it a pipe, or a tree, or anything that you want, you know, to look at. And it helps us particularly when we're talking with a resident on the phone, if they have a question about something, a utility, an engineer on the phone, they have a question about something. So it's been a great resource for us. As I mentioned, since 2002, they've been our mapping person, and though we've gone through several mapping specialists in the office, we've been stable over the last few years. Our current person that helps us out is Andrew Schuman, and he's been a solid partner of ours. He's in two days a week, and sometimes we have him on call on days that he's off, if we have a dire need for him to perform mapping services for us while he's out. So he's working remotely for us sometimes, too. But they did provide a proposal and a contract extension for 2025, which is customary for them, cost-of-living adjustment for Andrew Schuman, who I mentioned, their employee, 4.6% increase for 2025, bringing the cost for next year up to $96,129.24, and well worth the money, in our opinion. With that, we recommend that the board, mayor and board, consider approval of the resolution to continue forward with MGP in an amount not to exceed $96,129.24.
And I know Bob mentioned the increase. There were a couple of COVID years where there was no increase, too. So we're still playing a little catch-up, I think, probably with staff.
Questions by the board? By the public? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 24-128, a resolution to purchase landscape plant material from Reds in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
So we do have a contractual maintenance for landscaping, and this includes our planter boxes up and down in the downtown area. There are also several planting areas where we have a contractor come in and do planting for us. Last year was the first year that we split out the actual maintenance and the purchase of the material. We find that the material from Reds is really high quality. We've had really good luck in 2024, probably the best-looking landscaping that we've had, that we can remember, and that I think is part and parcel with the way that we're doing it. We're breaking the contract up. So with that, I'm recommending and requesting that the mayor and board consider approval, that we waive the competitive bidding process, and consider purchasing plant supplies and material from Reds Garden Center in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Questions?
Are there any coordination problems with our splitting the bid like that? That was my only concern when we decided to do it last year, but clearly, this plant material is superior to what we were getting.
It's really good. It's up to us to coordinate everything, of course, in the purchasing, you know, getting a list from the contractor on what to order.
Yeah.
So it's a little bit more lifting on our end, but it's well worth it.
So essentially, the Milu, which we'll talk about a little bit, they ask, they design what's going to go in those places.
That's correct.
And then you then facilitate the acquisition of the plant materials from Reds.
Exactly.
To get that. And plant quality has been an issue, I mean, in the past.
Prior to this, yes. Big time.
Yeah. Yeah. So they provide us, Milu provides us with, you know, quarterly. They give us an idea, three or four different concepts of what they want to plant. You know, we look at those concepts, we yea and nay, and we add some things and subtract some things. We come up with an idea of what it is that we want to have in those planting boxes, and then in the planting areas, and then we go ahead and make the purchase. It works out really well.
Yeah, they look great.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 24-129, a resolution to award landscape maintenance, a landscape maintenance contract to Milu Design.
Yeah, so this item is, it goes along with the planting material. Milu is the contractor that does the planting and the maintenance for us. They're also providing us with the concepts of what the plantings will look like. We did go out to bid in 2022, and they were the successful low bidder. We selected them at that time. And as contracts, contracts of this type allow us one-year extensions, and so we're requesting, this would be the second year extension for this contract. So we're requesting that we extended another year, having had great luck with them in 2024. And the price for them is going up by 1.75%. That's, again, just their cost-of-living adjustment, since there is no material included in this contract. The total price is $43,322. At this time, Public Works Department is requesting mayor and board consider approval of the resolution to award landscape maintenance to Milu Design Incorporated.
Questions? Motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 24-131, a resolution to waive competitive bidding and award parkway tree and stump removal to advance tree care. We skipped one.
Sewer lining.
I'm sorry.
How can you skip sewer lining?
Item, yes. Item 24-130, a resolution to award sewer lining contract to Vidu Sewer in an amount not to exceed $450,000.
Thank you.
Big one.
We've been lining sewers for quite some time, and about 10 years ago, we started doing this a little bit more aggressively, finding that we had a lot of structural defects in our sanitary sewers, as well as storm sewers. And we found that this is a much more feasible and reasonably priced option than replacing any type of sewer, storm, or sanitary that's in the ground, rather than digging it up. You're actually doing a cast-and-place liner. It's pretty slick, and it's about a third of the price of replacing the pipe. This year, in 2025, we're proposing that we replace, or that we line a 24-inch sanitary sewer that goes between the Warwick Road Pump Station and the east side, I'm sorry, it doesn't go all the way down to the east side. It goes down to Zion Woods Development. And so it's a larger diameter pipe, but it does sit right in the creek bed. And we believe that, you know, though the pipe is in good condition, sitting in the creek bed is introducing a lot of storm water into the sanitary system, and we have to treat that storm water once it reaches the wastewater treatment plant. So this is not only an INI reduction project, but then it's a cost-savings project on the receiving end of it. So we do budget every year for sanitary sewer lining. This year, we have $450,000 budgeted for the project, and as I mentioned, this is about 1,500 feet of pipe. It's a little bit higher cost than we normally see for lining of that small of a segment of pipe, I should say, short of a segment of pipe, but due to the diameter, it's a little bit higher priced. The contractor also, incidentally, has to park equipment on the east side of the creek, on a piece of property that we own on the east side. So it's Zero Rider Lane, I believe, is the address. We need to do some brush clearing over there, and then have the contractor bring in a crane and a bridge to transport equipment over into this very difficult-to-reach area where we're planning to line sewers. So there is some additional cost to all the ancillary items that I mentioned. With that, we're recommending that the mayor and board consider approval of the resolution to award sewer lining contract to Vidu Sewer in an amount not to exceed $450,000.
And this is a budget item, as you said?
It is.
And Bob, this east side, the feeder to the east side station, this is a multi-year project, right? This is Deerfield Road and north, and then you've got two more segments to come in?
So the pipe goes all the way from Warwick Road Pumping Station all the way down to the east side pumping station, which is on the Warwick, the end of Warwick, where Warwick ends, past Deerfield Road, there's a walking trail in there, and then on the south end of that walking trail is where the east side pumping station is. It's near Mariah Congregation, just east of Mariah Congregation. And so it's about 10,000 linear feet of pipe. Last year, I'm sorry, this year, in 2024, we lined a section that goes from Deerfield Road north to the northern limit of the Zion Woods property. And the reason why we did that is to get out of Zion Woods Way, line it before they got in there, let them do their construction, and then, you know, we don't have to go back in there. So we do have that last section from Zion Woods up to Warwick, and then we have from Deerfield Road all the way down to the east side pump station to line still. So it'll probably take three, maybe four years to line everything, and that's if we don't have other structural defects to line in the interim. So as you know, you know, some of the eight-inch, 12-inch sanitary sewers, as we're cleaning regularly, we notice that sometimes these pipes are ready to fail, so then we do a quick liner on them, and we shore them up structurally.
But by this investment of the different three sections of about $1 million, in lieu of a $4 million pipe replacement project and the treatment, it's a huge efficiency move, from my perspective, but it's also a significant commitment on the board's part to invest in this sewer line, which is super important.
Yeah, it's hard to say how much it would cost to replace the sanitary sewer, because we wouldn't be able to replace it in the same location. We'd have to find a new location to route that sewer.
That's a problem.
And so we'd be replacing roads, replacing other utilities. It would be quite expensive. I would imagine $10 million.
Yeah. And we find that, you found that the longevity of these lined sewers is just about as long as a new pipe would be.
They save 50 years, but we all, you know, know that it's going to be about 100. You could also reline them.
A second time.
Which is, you know, pretty awesome.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
So again, you think about a concrete pipe that has joints.
Right.
Now you're inserting a resin, an epoxy resin that has no joints, so the flow resistance is a lot less.
Right.
And you just don't have the weak points. I mean, to me, it's a super, super good investment.
Do we have the approval of the feds who kept that project along Zion Woods? Took a lot longer, because they were looking at it, because it was for the river. Are they in on this, or do we have to jump?
Well, we're.
We finished that part.
Yeah, so we don't expect any coordination with the feds on this project, because we're going to be below grade. We aren't going to be working in floodplain. But we do communicate with them through Lake County regularly, so if the need arises, we'll have, we'll reach out to them.
Good. Is there a motion for the resolution to award sewer lining to, how do I pronounce it correctly, Bob?
Vidu Sewer.
Vidu Sewer.
So moved.
Second.
So glad you didn't skip that one.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
And Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Let's do it again. Resolution to waive competitive bidding. Let's do it again. Resolution to waive competitive bidding and award the parkway tree and stump removal contract to advance tree care in the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
It's, it's hard to believe, but every year, we do spend about seventy-five thousand dollars on tree removal, going back to about two thousand thirteen, two thousand twelve. We had ash tree removal. We spent a lot of money on tree removal those years. This year, in two thousand twenty-four, this contractor, Advanced Tree Care, helped us during a very catastrophic storm event in August, and they helped us very significantly to get through that over a period of two weeks. We had eight crews running, and this is the same contractor that is side by side with us, working along with us to 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 address issues like that. So that's this one great thing about, about this contractor. But we do annually, since we don't have staff to remove large diameter trees in the village, this is the twenty-four inch, the thirty-six inch diameter trees, we do hire Advanced Tree Care or other tree contractors to do this work for us. And in, similar to the other contracts, we put this project out to bid in two thousand twenty-two. We are on, on the, in a contract extension, so we found them to be, to meet our needs and to be a successful partner with us. So we're requesting to extend that contract by another year. In the end of two thousand twenty-five, we'll be rebidding pretty much all of these contracts.
So three, kind of three-year bids is typically how we do that.
And so Advanced Tree Care is not requesting a price increase for this year. So we're, we're going to, at this point in time, ask that, request that the Village Board consider approval of the resolution to waive the competitive bidding process, since we're extending the contract, and then award parkway tree and stump removal to the, to Advanced Tree Care, and this is in the budgeted amount of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Question? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution to waive competitive bidding and award parkway tree trimming to advance care in the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
Similar to tree removal, this is an annual contract to do tree trimming and and also stump removal, or, just sorry, just tree trimming, rather. The other, the other one is stump, stump removal. Tree trimming is done every year. Typically, you know, the village is broken up into four quadrants, but it takes us about five years to make a full cycle through the village. And I think it, the evidence is pretty clear that when we do log out dead wood on trees in the parkway, that it it does help now the condition of our trees, it helps the health of our trees. And then when we have heavy winds, we don't have a lot of limbs that come down. So it, it's, it's a great practice for us. We've, we've been very successful with it. If approved, this year, this, in two thousand twenty-five, the contractor will finish trimming in the northwest quadrant, and then our largest quadrant is the southwest. They will start trimming in that quadrant, doing as much as we can, and then pick that up again in two thousand twenty-six. But but as I mentioned, this is a one-year contract extension. We're at the end of that. Two thousand twenty-five will, will go back out, or late in two thousand twenty-five, we'll go back out to bid for tree trimming and tree removal. With that, we're requesting that the Mayor and Village Board consider a resolution to waive the competitive bidding, since we're doing a contract extension, and award the parkway tree trimming contract to Advanced Tree Care in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars, which is the budgeted amount in two thousand twenty-five.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
A resolution authorizing the customization of one public works vehicle. This is item twenty-four, one thirty-three.
Okay. I brought the first part of this to the Village Board in November, and this is the bread truck, we call it. It's truck number six oh four. Every village has at least one of these in their fleet, and it's typically used for water main breaks. The first request that I made of the Village Board and the Mayor were to consider the purchase of the chassis and the body of the truck, and that was approved. I mentioned at that time that I would come back and that I would have a price for upfitting, which is basically a customization of the interior of the truck. That includes generator, air compressor, toolboxes, heater, air conditioning unit, all these different things that go along the inside of a, of a piece of equipment like this. And it's highly specialized. It's, it's, it's built to last. This truck was built in two thousand eight. It's a little bit beyond what we would normally do, but the prices are a little bit higher, too. So we're kind of, we're stretching our equipment out a little bit more. We did receive a price from a vendor that we deal with, and that vendor is, is Selber Manufacturing. The price is one hundred and twenty-six thousand, five forty-eight for the, for the customization of the interior of the truck. These, the customization contractors are few and far between. This one does a lot of customization on trucks just like this. Feel very comfortable with them. And with that, we're requesting that the Mayor and Board consider a resolution authorizing the customization of one public works vehicle. This is truck number six oh four, and the amount is one twenty-six, five forty-eight.
How much was the chassis and the body? Was it like seventy-five?
Eighty-nine, six fifty-four.
Okay.
For a total of two hundred and sixteen thousand, two oh two, which is thirty, about thirty-four thousand dollars, under what we budgeted. We budgeted two fifty.
How long does it take to outfit the truck?
Uh, we should, we should see this truck mid-two thousand twenty-five.
Wow.
So about six to eight months.
It's a lot of work.
And everything's custom now, right?
Right.
They're not building that ahead of time, so you're not.
I do like the name of the truck, though.
The bread truck?
Question, yeah. Questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item twenty-four, one thirty-four, a resolution to waive competitive bidding and award contract for turf maintenance to Patriot Property Services in an amount not to exceed forty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars.
We do have quite a few areas where we perform turf maintenance, and then we have others where we have them performed contractually. So we have about thirty contractual locations, and this contractor successfully performed this work in two thousand twenty-four for us. The project was out to bid in two thousand twenty-three, late in two thousand twenty-three. So this is their second year. They, they are requesting a price increase of four point five percent for the two thousand twenty-five year. That's basically cost of living adjustment, as far as I can tell, not, not an adjustment for fuel or material. They, they were the successful low bidder and and did a great job last year. We're very happy with their work. And we have budgeted for this expenditure. And so with that, we're requesting that the Mayor and Board consider a resolution to waive the competitive bidding process, once again, because we're extending the contract, and award the contract for turf maintenance to Patriot Property Services in the amount of forty thousand, seven fifty-five. And they're also a, owned by a mill, a former military person.
I see in some of these contracts, there is an increase, but those increases are very modest. One percent, four percent, two percent. It's really.
Yeah.
Pretty modest. All right. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item twenty-four, one thirty-five, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one portable generator.
Thank you. So the wastewater treatment, or the, the WRF Division has, has their own trailer-mounted generator. And this is a generator that you attach to a pickup truck. You haul it around the village in different areas where you need it. We have several pumping stations that are not outfitted with generators. They don't have fixed generators at the stations. And if we were to lose power at one of those locations, this generator gets dragged over there and plugged in, and we can run, we can fully run those, those locations, those pumping stations with this generator. The generator was purchased fifteen years ago, a little bit before we rebuilt the wastewater treatment plant. And so it just as a matter of turning over our equipment, we're suggesting that we purchase a new one. We have saved money in the VERF account for this purchase to the tune of twenty-seven thousand dollars. The cost of purchasing a new piece of equipment is thirty-one, nine ninety-five, and we did receive two purchase quotes, one from O'Leary's and one from Burris Equipment, Burris being the lowest price. But this would, this would be a replacement piece of equipment for that generator, and it, and it's an ace in the hole for us when we have major storms or other types of electrical issues in the village.
And this keeps sanitary sewage out of people's basements.
That's correct.
So is one enough?
Well, we plan to keep this one.
So we'll have two.
So we will have two.
Is our two enough?
Two's enough.
Okay.
Yeah, two's enough. We've gotten along, we've gotten along okay with one. And, you know, so the, as you know, we've had some issues with generators in two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah.
So, so we're, you know, we're pretty confident with this, with the, with the one purchase.
And again, ComEd's system is more robust than it was fifteen years ago, too, right? We've gone through that process, right?
Yes.
So the, the chances of major, again, last year, sorry, you're right. Last year's storm was a tough one. It took out a lot of power lines with a lot of trees.
Yeah.
But I think having, you know, an additional unit, we got three of these stations. Bob, how many of these stations do we have that aren't?
So the North Avenue Station, Finkston Road Station, the Deerbrook Mall Pumping Station, and then we have two standalone storm stations that are at, that are on, one on Deer Path and one.
So five.
That's down.
So five that we potentially use this in.
Yeah. And, and most, most often, you know, where we've lost power, has been at the North Avenue Pumping Station. So this is seen the most use there, at that location. Deerbrook on occasion.
What other services are utilized with the generator?
This is pretty much a one-trick pony.
Okay.
This is all it gets used for. And, and, but when you need it, you need it.
You gotta have.
Yeah, and, and.
So your point, you can't commit it elsewhere in case you need it for this particular.
We can't commit it elsewhere, and and we haven't committed it to any other municipalities. You know, we, we keep it for ourselves.
Have we had requests?
We get requests to borrow just about every piece of equipment.
Wow.
Yeah, and sometimes, and more often than not, we allow, you know, we shit, we trade equipment.
You try to help. You try to help if you can.
Mostly sign, sign message boards have been a, a big ask. We haven't had too many asks in the last couple of years.
Oh, yeah.
With that, we request a resolution, that the Mayor and Board consider approval of the resolution authorizing the purchase of one portable generator. We have budgeted for this piece of equipment, and then once again, we did, and we had saved money in the VERF for twenty, twenty-seven thousand dollars out of the thirty-one, nine ninety-five.
A good deal.
Questions? There a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all for your patience.
Thank you. Item twenty-four, one thirty-six, a resolution to approve asset management contract with OpenGov dot in.
Good morning, Board. Sorry. As you know, staff is always continuously looking to improve our operations. One way the Public Works Department is looking to improve ours is through the asset management and work order system that we currently utilize. The current work order system has gone through our village website. It lacks the mobile functionality that we, in the twenty-first century, are accustomed to. And an improvement on there will greatly impact our operations.
Tyler, can you just speak up a little bit?
Sorry. Yep, yep. So our current system was an improvement in the previous years. It was a throw-in in addition with our website contract that we had about seven or eight years ago. And while it was an improvement, there's still a lot that can be proved upon. Therefore, staff is budgeted for a new asset management and work order system in two thousand twenty-five, and would, the software include both an asset management portion, as well as a public-facing work order system, that will allow residents and staff to better submit, investigate, and resolve issues. The current issue is a little bit cumbersome and clunky, if the software can be clunky, and it's just, we just don't see a lot of residential use out of our existing system. There are a variety of software packages that can improve our operation, but the OpenGov, or formerly Cartograph, as many of us know it by, has been at the top of staff's lists, list for years. Among the many advantages of selecting OpenGov or Cartograph is its ability to integrate with a lot of existing village software. This would include GIS, the now OpenGov building permit software that Andrew spoke about, and a variety of other public works software modules. It's very user-friendly to both internal and external users. And while, while OpenGov Asset Management has over ten different categories of assets, this could be water systems, sanitary systems, roadways, sidewalks, staff is proposing to implement the three that have the most public focus, which are the transportations, which is, could be signs, potholes, lights, streetlights, walkability, which is ADA compliance, sidewalks, trees, and some other pedestrian signage, and then finally, stormwater, which is flooding inlets that we get a lot of phone calls in the spring about. The village may consider budgeting in future years for the implementation of some of those other modules, water, sanitary sewer being two of them, if deemed necessary in future years. Staff has had multiple meetings with OpenGov to review the functionality and implementation of the software. This will go beyond just public works. It is a front-facing citizen service request for public, or public works, but also police department, admin, finance, all sorts of things. So we've had many different meetings with the frontline staff in OpenGov to present this and showcase what it can, what it can do for the village.
So can you give us, like, maybe just a practical example of how this would work?
Yeah, so for the work order, you're walking down the street, you see a pothole. The existing system, you have to go to the website, log in, share a photo. Our foreman will then print it out, because it lacks a mobile feature to it. Our crews will go out, fill the pothole, write on the, write on the piece of paper, to, back to the foreman. Foreman will update the work order ticket, and the resident will be notified. Now, you would, from your phone, go to the village website, put in Mayor Dan, take a photo. It immediately goes to an iPad in the cruise trucks. And if they're, happen to do potholes that day and they get to it, they can take a photo of that as well. Hit complete, bypasses the foreman interaction. He will obviously see a list of running, and running tally, but automatically gets you as a work order completed. So it's, you know, we're taking, trying to take paper out of it, and the functionality, it'll also better prepare our foreman for daily tasks. They can look through the Cartograph, or the OpenGov system, look at work orders that need, say, pothole patching or streetlight.
Anyone can send a picture of a pothole or a down sign or something like that. They have an app on their phone?
It could be, it could be an app, or it could be done through the village website.
Okay.
Which I, and you don't have to log in. It's, you don't have to be notified on the backend if you don't want to. You know, there's options for that. It's solely up to the user that's submitting that request, whether they want to or not.
But Tyler, you say, we have very little traffic from the public through the website in terms of complaints this way. And one of the things that's in this proposal is that OpenGov will be training our staff how to use the software. How do we train our residents to start contacting us that way and start using that software more than they do?
It'll be a PR.
There will be a PR campaign.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
So, and we, the more they tell us, the less we're unaware of, and the more we're knowledgeable of, of whether it's potholes, I use that frequently, but as an example, it could be street signs. It could be, you know, reflect, retrovulnerability issues with a sign that you can't see it at night. Could be tree trimmings. Obviously, this year, we had a lot of tree trimming requests and a lot of tree requests in general. So that'll better position us to give our work orders. And it's, and it's third-party accessible as well, so we can give it to the advanced tree care contract that Bob just got approved. And say, hey, we have these work orders for the twenty-four, thirty-inch, thirty-six-inch trees. Please update that when you're completed. And if that came from the village staff, we'd be notified. If it came from a resident, if, whether it was a trim job, they would also be notified as well. So it has a lot of functionality. It integrates well with our GIS or our mapping systems. Our tree inventory that we just completed earlier this year will be migrated into here. We'll keep continuous records. The tree trimming that Bob presented as well, we'll update those trees. It'll just bring all of our different, you know, we've got Excel sheets, we've got paper, we've got different proprietary software for signs, for, for their fuel stations, for tree inventories, bring them under one house and one umbrella, so that we can look at, you know, the, the complete picture in a single software.
So is this something we want to let the public know about?
We'll have to.
Hundred percent. It'll, there will, there will be a leg about, leg, PR leg on this.
We'll be busy, David. We'll be busy, David.
So we have something like this in St. Petersburg, Florida, an app, and it's absolutely fantastic. It's like, it's life-changing for residents.
And we want, yeah, we want that ease of use.
It's just so easy. So instead of calling and waiting on the phone for somebody to answer and tell them what your issue is, you just take a picture, or you don't even know how to take a picture, you just type it in, and then you can watch the progress on your app. It's fantastic.
And that's how this communication back.
Yeah, there's an app associated with it.
You could even watch what's happening at your neighbors and be notified.
We are very proud that we're coming out of the nineties.
Yes. You know, the intent behind the, the existing soft, the existing way was, we just got a new website, let's try this out for a couple of years. Well, that was, that led us into COVID, and then obviously kind of four years fast-forwarded real quick there.
At some point, when it's right, I'd like to see a demonstration of this.
Absolutely.
Because it sounds really cool, but I, I need to see it in order to know that it's really cool.
You know, maybe we can do a demonstration and put the demonstration on the website so people can go to the website and see the demonstration.
Almost like a YouTube tutorial sort of thing.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to do some legwork before we're ready for that, but absolutely. We're, we're excited to get the residents, because you know, that's, you know, gets to the crews.
Yeah, I think this sounds great, and so now let's take it to the next level. Let's see it, let's see how it works, and let's inform the public and get people on their apps or come to the website to use it. Because it sounds great, now we've got to put it into motion.
We're, we're excited as well.
Yes, it sounds, sounds very cool.
So unfortunately, though, the, the cost for next year was about eighty-eight thousand. We budgeted fifty, split between engineer, or public works and community development. A lot of that's just a single, the one-year leg lift in getting all this implemented. Again, we're doing three diff, three different asset suites, sidewalk or walkability, streets, which will be your potholes, signs and things, and then also stormwater complaints, so.
Why are you recommending those three as opposed to the other?
They are the most public-focused. We, we could do a water, a wastewater treatment plant, but that, that will have very little public interaction to it. We wanted the stuff that, because we, we don't want people, when we put out that PR statement, we don't want people going there and finding out that their specific complaint is not listed there. So these are the three that are most prevalent to us. You know, there's parks in there as well, but obviously we don't have the parks. These are the three that are most relevant to us as far as what our public and what our residents typically may have concerns with.
And then if we wanted to add some of those other domains in the future, the, the cost would be equivalent, sort of, to what we're paying for each one.
Yeah, so the cost.
That's how much more it would be.
Yeah, then next year will be eighty-eight, and then the following year, because we won't have that one time up front across, it's around mid-thirties. Obviously, there would be an increase with any type of additional suite that we do implement. So to cover the overage, we are looking, or we are proposing to use thirty-eight thousand dollars out of our sidewalk program. Again, we have that ADA transition plan as part of it. We have a walkability component in this, so we feel justified in using some of that fund from next year. It should be noted that ongoing annual costs for the above categories are projected around thirty-four and thirty-six thousand dollars for the next two years. So significant upfront costs, but significant reduction in a year or two. The attached resolution includes a waiver of competitive bidding due to staff, staff's preference towards the OpenGov software for the reasons listed above. Staff is requesting to adopt the resolution to approve asset management software contract with OpenGov Inc. in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. We do have Elliot Pipkin here of OpenGov. He's our guru. If there's, if you guys need to go deep in the weeds on some of this, but happy to answer more questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Tyler or Elliot? Public? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty-four, one thirty-seven, ordinance amending and revising the annual budget of our village for the fiscal year beginning January twenty-four and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
So as we close out 2024, we have a handful of accounts that need to be adjusted to reflect the actual approved expenditures. Projections show that the water fund and the sewer fund, actual expenditures will exceed the, the original budgeted amount. The water fund overage is largely due to overtime, equipment repair and maintenance, and materials in the Water Main Maintenance Division. And the sewer fund overage is largely due to repairs that required outside vendors, along with an increase in the utility rates. We may have more amendments as we get further into 2025. Those first couple months of expenditures do relate back to 2024. At this point, this is our, our best estimate, though.
Does anyone have any questions for Eric? Public? Is there a motion to approve the ordinance amending the budget? So moved?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Resolution approving the adoption of a policy concerning the village's affordable housing procedures.
Wow.
Thank you, Mayor Board. The Village Board adopted an Affordable Housing Ordinance in 2021. This resolution establishes the policies and procedures for a manual that discussed the administration and the compliance, developers' compliance, with the Affordable Housing regulations. Some of those things include how a tenant or homeowner would obtain a certificate of qualification from our consulting partners, SEPA, Community Partners for Affordable Housing. And we do have Amy Kaufman here with us this evening to help answer questions. It discusses perhaps the appeal process if someone doesn't get recertified, and that what that recertification process would look like if you're looking to re-lease a property that's affordable. It would discuss, for instance, the resale as well. So if someone's in a affordable home and they go to sell it, how those processes work. So a lot of the document mirrors the ordinance that was approved, but then it adds a level of nuance and detail related to the implementation of that ordinance. It is the responsibility of the developer to comply with these regulations. The policy document that's presented here is consistent with the discussions and our practice that we've had thus far working with developers. So the conversations we've had with Continental, with Pulte, with Venpoint about how the Affordable Housing regulations will work. This reflects those discussions. As I mentioned, Community Partners for Affordable Housing is our designated consultant to assist with the administration of the Affordable Housing Program at this time. They have a lot of experience doing this in the regional area here, and Amy can speak to that as well. And then I just wanted to note that these documents related to a question I received in advance of the meeting do work in conjunction with the development agreement and the restrictive housing covenants that were, are recorded against the property. So it's just noted on page eight that the developer has to execute any and all documents deemed necessary by the village, including without limitation restrictive covenants and other related instruments to ensure the continued affordability of these affordable housing units.
And that would be recorded against the property.
So the development agreement's recorded, and then the Affordable Housing Covenant is recorded against the property. These affordable units are in perpetuity, and so the developer identifies, like for instance in Pulte, the exact lots for those homes, it's recorded against those three lots, that those must remain affordable in perpetuity, and then these policies discuss how that resale option would work.
So I know there was a lot of detail that was negotiated with the Development Agreement for Pulte, and I'm sure with the other agreements, too, relative to affordable housing. And you guys did a great job in conduct, in conjunction with SEPA and with, with Amy, I'm sure. So maybe if you wouldn't mind coming forward and telling us a little bit about SEPA and how you were so helpful for us in implementing this.
Well, I have to say, your team is a great team, so we really have enjoyed working with Deerfield, with Andrew and Dan, and it's really been a pleasure with Ben. So it's been a group effort. We are a full-service affordable housing nonprofit. We do everything from affordable homeownership, affordable rental, foreclosure prevention, down payment assistance, owner occupied rehab, you name it. We do the whole, whole mess of affordable housing programs. One of our areas of expertise is partnering with municipalities to administer their affordable housing programs. Sometimes it starts with the drafting of the ordinance, sometimes we come in after the ordinance has been drafted to help administer the programs. There's not only the policies and procedures, but there's the actual identifying tenants, identifying qualified owners, so that we can help the program run efficiently, so that houses get sold in a timely way to qualified buyers, so that rental units get leased up in a timely way to qualified tenants, so the program is actually serving the population that you intended to serve. We work not only with Andrew and Dan and team, but they bring in the developers, they bring us off and in into those conversations. They don't hesitate to reach out to us if they need some further consultation, and it's, it's an extremely collaborative and effective process.
Awesome. Thank you, and, and thank you for your expertise. As you were talking, I was just thinking, we did our Affordable Housing Ordinance fall, I think, of twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
So here we are, three years later, and now we're putting the meat to the bones and how it works, and how it's going to be implemented with our three developments that are, that are progressing right now. And so, and, and before that, there were several years of going through affordable housing.
Many years.
Yeah, so there was a lot of work from prior boards and prior mayors to get to that point, and now here we are. So it's been quite a journey. And I, I think it's quite an achievement, and this board and the prior boards and staff should be very proud of getting us from point A to B tonight, where we're now codifying and implementing and voting on a formal policy and procedure for this. So thank you to everyone for that. Did you want to say something?
I, it's just, to see this come to fruition is, is amazing, having participated in this for what seems like a very long time. And I'm glad we have it in place in time for us to build our first substantial developments that will include affordable housing. And we debated about this for so long. Some of my colleagues on, on former boards didn't feel like this was necessary, some did, some didn't. To reach this point is great. I did have a question. I mean, this is very thorough, and as to the, whoever had asked you the question prior to this, Andrew, about how does this match up with the other stuff that we had sent out to developers? I found, you know, links, and it was great. But I just want to be sure that this is very complete and detailed about what happens when the owner of an owned affordable unit goes on the market. This also covers if a developer sells the development that includes affordable units, that those affordable units will be continued, correct?
Yes.
Rental, right, affordable rental units.
Yes.
Correct.
And most importantly, there is a restrictive covenant, whether it's developer-owned rental building, or if it's.
Individually owned.
Individual, single, you know, family occupied homes. And that covenant will govern. And it will be, it's on title, and it's there, and anybody coming in is required to follow that covenant.
Which is great. I just want this to last.
Yes, so just to that point.
The permanence is important.
We've had a lot of resales and a lot of turnovers.
Yep.
And these restrictive covenants, they actually work.
Yes.
Right? We do get notice, it does show up on title if somebody is trying to sell something that they shouldn't be selling on the open market, which really doesn't happen. We develop relationships with the buyers, they stay in touch with us, they know they need us to sell, to resell, so it really doesn't happen. But the restrictive covenants show up on title, and there's a lot of checks on the system to make sure that these units don't fall through the cracks and wind up being sold on the open market. Ditto with the turnovers on the rental units, you have to rely a little bit more on the property managers, and there is some turnover at property management staff sometimes. So we really work hard at keeping tight relationships with property management staff. My, the people who work with me really make a lot of effort to, we're very present so that we know when there's turnovers. And also, some of that is also, the recertification process helps because you have to be in touch with the tenant every year. There's built-in checks on the system so that units do not fall through the cracks.
Between Continental, Pulte, and Venpoint, I think we're at about, over forty affordable units about.
Yeah.
And the low-income units, not affordable, but low-income, over at Zion, Lutheran Zion, that's another twenty-four. So we're really helping those in need by offering over seventy, about seventy units of affordable or low-income units for folks.
Mostly rental, which will have turnover.
Right.
And need to be monitored, just as you said.
And then also the SLIF, which is affordable.
Right. That does not include the SLIF, which is another hundred and fifty or so, plus or minus.
But that's not in this. I mean, that's not covered.
No, that's not. Correct.
But I think it's important, I mean, if you're looking at the numbers, if you're looking at the numbers and the commitment this village has made.
That will have that opportunity for people.
In one year, that's a tremendous number.
Well, yeah.
And let me just add other things SEPA will do for us. So every developer has to submit a preliminary and a, on a final affordable compliance housing plan, so that comes through the Plan Commission, gets approved by the village board, but it also goes to SEPA. SEPA's taken many direct phone calls from the developers as they have nuanced questions of exactly how this would work. They help to manage the waitlist. Well, no, they, they manage the waitlist, they can help with marketing efforts, and then they, there's a requirement that tenants, I mean, it applies to everybody, but they have to go through a class at SEPA to understand what it means to own a house and how there's additional income or, or tenant.
Right, that's awesome.
So they have to go through these classes before they can get the certification. So it's really a robust program and partnership between the village, SEPA, and the developer, because, you know, we all need to work together to make this successful.
Well, it's a learning experience for all of us. I mean, we started out with, well, we didn't build new units in this community for a very long time.
Right.
And it was just in the last ten years or so, we started building more rental units at all. And then we talked about, well, maybe they'll voluntarily do something more affordable, and it was very fluid, and it was maybe.
Riva, Riva did that, that original proposal. Of course, that didn't go, didn't get built.
That's where it all kind of bubbled up.
That's where it started. So to have this codified is a big step, but it will set an example for future development in the village, and we will have more. So this is a huge step, and I'm, I'm, we should pat ourselves on everybody's back.
How do the restrictive covenants enforce the rental units?
Yeah, so, Ben, do you want to speak to that? I mean, we have the restrictive covenant against any of the multifamily developments.
Yeah, so to take Continental for example, there, there is restricted covenant saying that they have to provide that certain number of affordable units, and we, as the village, have remedy rights if we find out that they're not doing it, and it's in perpetuity. So when, if Continental ever goes to sell, the next owner of that building is, has the commitment to maintain the affordability.
And that is in the development agreement, which is recorded against the property as a whole?
Well, it's in the covenant. So the development agreement goes away. The, you know, the way we record a development agreement, so if it's sold, whoever's building is, is stuck with those obligations, but the development agreement is meant once the building is constructed.
By the covenant.
It, it, it goes away. But that's why we do separate the Affordable Housing Covenant itself. And so under the PUD ordinance and the development agreement, they're committed to recording the covenant, and we are not going to issue any certificates of occupancy or anything until that covenant is recorded, and that covenant will stay and run with the property in perpetuity.
Okay, and it's recorded against the property as a whole? Like, it's not recorded against any particular unit or lot?
It depends. So when it's a multifamily building, it's recorded against that building.
Continental, for example.
Right. So that, so that one is, is recorded against the whole building.
Right.
When it comes to Pulte, because there's going to be individual lots and single-family[1681.01] When it comes to Pulte, because there's going to be individual lots and single-family homes, three of the lots.
Each property.
The three lots that are affordable have a covenant against those three lots. And so if Pulte, you know, and so think about it, you know, they're going to sell off all the forty-two lots, you know, thirty-nine of them will not be encumbered, but three will, and whoever buys them in the future has to comply with the Affordable Housing Covenant.
That's the legal answer, that, you know, that those are, and the practical answer is, I know. The practical answer is that if a property was no longer being used for affordable housing, I promise you, there's a hundred percent chance we're going to find out about it.
Yeah.
Because we are, like I said, connected to the tenants, and there's recertification. It's just not foreseeable that we're not going to know if there is some sort of change being made. The other thing is, also, not on the legal side, but property managers are required not to offer extensions of leases until they have gotten word that the current tenant has been recertified. We had one situation in Evanston where we lost our teeth because the property manager accidentally let somebody sign a extension before we were able to complete. We were able to work it out, but we really ride that hard because they're not allowed to. That would be, you know, would be something that we would bring back to the village if there was consistent violation of offering leases before they had been notified that the tenant was recertified.
I have a question, are there any requirements in, for like a Pulte home situation, for the HOA to, or assessments, how assessments are handled with these affordable units or properties?
Yeah, so one of the things that we do with, and this is true with any property that has an HOA, is we have minimum requirements for HOA declarations. And provide that the HOA, so we have to approve them before they get recorded, and they cannot be amended, those provisions, without our permission. One of it deals with affordable, so the idea is they can't, you know, jerk around with different terms for HOAs, for the HOAs for the affordable. But the other, you know, and this goes well beyond just affordable, there are things that we want to protect the village and to make sure that we have an efficiently running HOA, and they cannot amend their bylaws freely without our permission.
So, so how is that checked? So is there something that we have to sign in order for them to record the amended deck? Or so how do we ensure that that happens?
So take Pulte. Pulte was unusual in the sense of they wanted us to approve at the time that we did the development agreement, their HOA documents. And I reviewed them, we made numerous edits to them, and they got approved as part of that development agreement.
Yeah, I remember, it was in there.
The normal is, we say prior to, I believe it's, I want to double-check it, but I believe it's prior to getting any certificate of occupancy or renting or selling any unit, we have to approve the HOA documents. So usually that comes slightly later, in the phase after the development agreement, but before things are done, we would approve them, and then it gets recorded, and then, you know, they can't amend it without our permission.
But I get that, but how do we ensure that they can't amend it without our permission?
Well, so a couple of things, so one of which is title companies may be looking at it. So if there's amendments, a whole bunch of amendments there, without showing any approval from us. Two is if we are notified and find out, and I'll tell you when it really does come up, it's when an HOA isn't operating appropriately. So for example, we say that you can, it requires, you cannot have a supermajority, seventy-five percent, or two-thirds majority to raise assessments. Because we know long-term, if people are out of state, if people, you know, it can be very difficult to get a seventy-five percent vote to raise assessments, and if you have an underfunded HOA, the property is not maintained. So if we find out that there's property maintenance problems and things are not well-maintained, we are going to look at what's going on and why, and we can see with their decks if they've amended it without our permission, and then we can then take care of it, and we can exercise our rights. The other way it comes up is often homeowners. If you're in an HOA and you're unhappy with the governance of your HOA, you read your bylaws, and it says this can't be amended without the village, somebody's going to say something internally to their management or to their officers, saying you guys are going rogue, or tell us. It doesn't happen often, but if it does, we then have remedies to make sure that they're complying.
So you are signing that HOA, we are signing that?
Are we approving it?
But are we signing the declaration? Because I'm just saying, as a real estate lawyer, I, when we look to amend a declaration, and I do get hired from time to time by associations to do that, we look at who signed and consented originally, the lender, you know. So is the village consenting, is what I'm asking.
We often do, yes, yeah, and it'll say our approval.
Not just our approval via email.
There's a signature block, there's a signature block, yes.
Okay.
So.
So that would be a check.
That would be one check, yep.
Well, that's of information, that's a good information. No, no, I'm glad you did that, and thank you for the answers.
So legally, how does this work then? We approve this tonight, and it becomes our official policy? And so that's publicized, it's published. Anyone who comes to us with any kind of development, we share this with them and say, this is our policy, because we have a requirement that you must provide affordable housing if your development is above a certain size.
And then they have to provide this to the potential tenants and purchasers?
There's a process in there.
Correct.
And in the covenants, it says that, you know, what, that they're agreeing to comply with our policy as amended.
Right.
So we will have a policy going forward, and it's referenced there as well, that they're going to comply.
So theoretically, in the future, with future developments, it will be simpler to work through these things than it has been for all these past years.
Yes.
Because we've built this through trial and error.
Yes.
And a piece at a time.
And you may amend this in the future, based on future experience, right? As we work through that, but.
But there was the classic discussion that we had years ago, well, how's a developer to know? Should we do it ad hoc, or should we do it, no, here's our policy.
Exactly, I mean, there was some feeling at the time, if you recall, that there would be more flexibility for us were we not to spell these things out.
Depending on the site configuration, depending on all of that stuff, you'd have more flexibility.
Yeah, yeah, huh. Good work.
In our, in our pre, any pre-development meeting, we advise a developer right away, we have an affordable housing requirement, you should know about that.
And now you're going to include, and here's our policy.
I'm going to say, here's how you apply it.
And ask Amy for any questions.
We'll tell them to call, Amy.
Her number's on it.
Pretty much. This is great.
Okay, are we ready to take a vote on the resolution approving the adoption of the policy concerning affordable housing?
I would move approval.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg? Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item twenty-four, one forty-one, an ordinance, thank you. An ordinance approving an amendment to the future land use plan of the comp plan for, and with regards to two oh two, three hundred, three oh two, and three oh four Wilmont Road, this is the Pulte project. Andrew?
This ordinance amends the future land use plan of the comprehensive plan to designate the subject property as a single-family.
Easy, simple, questions? Is there a motion to approve the ordinance? So moved?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item twenty-four, one forty-two, an ordinance amending chapter three of the municipal code of our village to increase the number of Class E liquor licenses by one to nine for Guzman and Gomez Restaurant LLC.
Andrew?
Guzman E. Gomez is looking to occupy six thirty-six Deerfield Road, and they would like a full bar. GEG is scheduled to open January ninth.
Full bar with beer, wine, and mixed, I mean, and hard liquor and stuff?
This is eat-in, right, it's not just takeout?
Yes, correct, although I haven't had it yet, but yes.
They got some good signage up there right now.
And breakfast burritos as well, so. You can start early, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Did you say we just voted for margaritas? Okay.
Not appletinis, I remember that conversation.
Items for discussion by the mayor and the board. Last week, we had a busy week, we had our winter celebration on Friday night, our winter market on Saturday, and then on Sunday, we had our board commissioners, and then we also had Northwestern Municipal Conference Holiday Party, which many of us attended. So for all of you that attended, I hope it was great. I know it was very well-attended and very well-run by staff, and it was good to see everyone, and good to see trustees at these things, too. On this agenda, we are very close to approving solar panels at the wastewater treatment facility, and we just approved an affordable housing policy. Two unbelievable things, which continues to show our leadership in these areas. Sustainability, affordable housing, and diversity, economic diversity. And we're doing it year in and year out, and I'm really, I'm going to take these glasses off, and I'm really, really proud of our accomplishments, especially tonight and throughout the year. And I want to thank all of you for getting us there, and the staff, Plan Commission, everybody, for a great year. I wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and a happy holiday season. Kent?
Nothing yet, Your Honor.
Anybody? Is there, we're going to executive session.
We need closed session.
Motion to adjourn to executive. So moved?
But it has to be pursuant to section two, C twenty-one of the Open Meetings Act, to discuss closed session minutes. And you need a roll call here on this? Roll call, though.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.